I have to take it down sometimes. I really needed some hot coffee, that's what I needed. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're ready to start this evening's board meeting. Okay, I gotta log in. The school board meeting of October 20th, 2020 is now called to order. The time is 6:02 PM. At this time, we request that all electronic devices be put in the silent mode. Also, we ask that you please refrain from using flash photography. We would like to take this opportunity to remind the members of the public of the district's mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest personal potential, and of the district's vision to be a world-class school system. This evening's agenda includes the invocation, the pledge of allegiance, public comment, consent-to-action items, which include one item under executive services, five items under academic services, three items under business services, two items under human resources, two items under operations, two items under attorney's recommendations, as well as four items under other business. Board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda? Ms. Morgan?
I move that we adopt the agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan, then seconded by Ms. Jordan. Thank you. Please record your vote, board members. Motion carries seven zero. Um, Ms. Fawn, did you vote?
No, she didn't.
No?
She didn't.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just came in and just logged in.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Okay.
What is this, the approval?
To accept the agenda.
Can you, thank you. Okay, motion carries seven zero. Thank you. This evening, Mrs. Giavanelle will deliver the invocation, after which Ms. Jordan will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Mrs. Giavanelle, please invite your guests to deliver the invocation at this time.
Pastor Rick Stevens on the phone?
Please rise.
Yes.
Oh, good. Please rise. Pastor Rick Stevens is the pastor of Diplomat Wesleyan Church in Cape Coral since 1997. Previously served churches in the U.S. and Canada. His son graduated from Mariner High School. He has a granddaughter attending Lee County School System. Thank you, Pastor Stevens, for the year of the invocation. Please deliver.
Thank you. Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, we come to you in the name of the One who is, and was, and is to come. We thank you for these board members and all of the district people who serve your students and families, and I pray that you would bless them all. You have entrusted them with enormous responsibilities. This evening, we especially pray that you would bless each board member. They face many pressures, and I pray that you would grant them clarity to discern what is right and what is wrong in your eyes. Then give them courage to choose right, no matter the temptations or pressures they face. For surely they, like all of us, will give an account to you. Therefore, we commend them to you and to your strengthening grace. We ask this in the name of Jesus, your anointed one. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. The next item on the agenda is public comment. Mrs. Dupree Bruno, please address the item of public comment. Please make sure you have completed a blue card if you intend to provide public comment. The blue card is a public record, identifying those who speak and providing contact information for staff to follow up. The blue cards are located in the hallway. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. School board policy provides the opportunity, at this point in the meeting, to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. If you completed a blue card, please put it in the basket or provide it to staff at the back of the room. If you need a blue card, they are located in the hallway outside of the boardroom. The rules concerning public comment are posted at the back of the room. Public comment will be made from the central microphone in the back of the room. Please be advised that the board does not respond during public comment to remarks made by speakers. At the end of the public comment period, the board chair, Ms. Fisher, will address concerns or the assignment of any concerns or requests to the superintendent. Board policy 1.81, 1.181 is in effect and requires everyone to wear a mask when on school board property, unless you have a reasonable accommodation and have requested same. In addition, for the benefit of other speakers, we ask that you use sanitization supplies, which are provided near the microphone, after you speak, for the benefit of the next speaker. Speakers and those attending the meeting are expected to act in a respectful manner. The purpose of public comment is to provide feedback on school district issues. Personal attacks on individuals or abusive language are prohibited. In addition, clapping, hissing, and booing are prohibited. Speakers who fail to follow proper decorum in the chambers will be ruled out of order. Any speaker continuing with such remarks will be required to relinquish the microphone. You will be told that you are out of order, and you will have one opportunity. Per board policy 1.11, and you may be removed from the chambers. Per board policy 1.11, the time per speaker is three minutes if there are twenty, two minutes if there are thirty, and one minute for anyone if there are more than thirty-one speakers. The maximum time allotted is one hour. You will find a countdown on the big screen in the front of the room. Once your time has elapsed, the microphone will automatically shut off. Please state your name prior to your comment. And Madam Chair, I'm still waiting for the number of public comment.
Thank you, Attorney Bruno. We'll just wait. Mr. Parfitt's gonna check.
Madam Speaker, we have twelve speakers.
Twelve speakers, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who did not fill out a blue card and wishes to speak this evening? Okay, Attorney Bruno, please call the first card.
Thank you, and I apologize in advance if I mispronounce your name. I'll do the best I can. Crystal Zyscon?
Good evening. My name is Crystal Zyscon. I have the pleasure of knowing three of you. I look forward to hopefully speaking with all of you. I watched the workshop where the LGBTQ meeting resolution was addressed, and it was determined that there would be a workshop after November. I'm happy to hear that there has been, I feel, some positive messages sent and recognitions at the last board meeting. However, I would like to state that trans lives, LGBTQ children's lives, are not to be politicized. I feel that by waiting to push this until November 17th, you have essentially politicized LGBTQ lives. And I'm standing here today to you in two ways. As a mother and as an organizer in Lee County, I have the ability and the capacity to really organize behind this. I know that there was dismay expressed by many board members about the onslaught of emails and phone numbers and how difficult it was at the last board meeting. And I would like to remind you how difficult it has been for me as a parent of a transgender child in Lee County. I have been working for four years, four years for my child to go to school and have a normal life. We just passed a non-discrimination act in June. In June, at the very last meeting, after all of you have been on this board for two years almost, right? So now that we have passed this non-discrimination act, that really gives me the power to no longer be silent and stand here and say to you, I need you to fight for my child's life. I need you to stop thinking about politics. I need you to stop thinking about elections. I need you, as women, as mothers, to recognize that my child has never been to a high school dance. My child has never made a friend, because my child is not safe to go to school. We should not be waiting till November to deal with my child's life. My child has to go out into this world, and you see what it's like in this world in America to be a transgender person. You have studies and statistics sent to you about the psychological ramifications of just one person allowing them to be themselves in a safe environment as a child before they go out in this world, and you are not fighting for my child's life. I want you to know that this is not going to go away from me. I will be here in November. I will be watching that movie, and I will be bringing people with me. So please, use your power, leverage your position, fight for my child's life. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And just a reminder, if you are able to speak and make your public comment with your mask on, that is what the board policy requires. If you need an accommodation, just let us know and we will accommodate you. The next speaker is Rachel Westbrook.
I've never done this before, so I'm a little nervous. I will be reading from my phone. I probably won't be as passionate and overwhelming as Crystal was. My name is Rachel Westbrook. I am a former teacher in Lee County and a transgender woman. I'm here today to express just how disappointed I am in the school board that you have pulled the LGBTQ resolution because of a group of parents who seem to already be having even bigger issues with. I work with a group of LGBT youth on a monthly basis, as I volunteer at a pride center right here in southwest Florida. Do you know what these kids' number-one fears are? School. Some of these stories are truly heartbreaking. I want to remind you of three very important things, and I think Madam Chair has already done that. The district motto, personal, passionate, and progressive. The district vision is to be a world-class school system. And the district mission is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest personal potential. When you have time, I do urge each and every one of you on the board to look at the percentage of suicide and depression among LGBTQ teenagers. That percentage could be lowered drastically if they knew that their school accepted them and they were part of the bigger curriculum that teaches their bullies and naysayers what LGBTQ history really is. Speaking from experience, tackling the mental health that goes into being a young queer person is hard work, and that is something I find most parents don't automatically understand. We are not trying to turn your straight kids gay. We are trying to keep your gay kids alive. And the first step in doing that is acceptance and acknowledgement in our schools. Thank you, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Katrina Deusterhaus?
Thank you very much for hearing, for hearing me today. Hi, my name is Kat Deusterhaus, Katrina, but everyone calls me Kat. As someone who identifies as non-binary, I can tell you firsthand that discrimination against LGBTQ+ folks is real. I can also tell you what it would have meant to me personally to have celebrated LGBTQ+ pride in my school. And when there are gender-neutral bathrooms and the discrimination that I feel when none are available for myself and others. Feeling seen and accepted is key to developing confidence, and there is no time when confidence is more crucial than in our formative years while we're in school. Furthermore, I wish to remind you that these rights are protected by the recently passed Non-Discrimination Act, and that denial of these rights could open you up to lawsuit. Though I hope you will do the right thing here, not because of legal fear, but because it is the right thing to embrace students of every gender identity and sexual orientation. I urge you to consider that this is not a political matter. It is a human rights issue, specifically LGBTQ+ rights. Please do the right thing now. It may be too late in November. Don't let even one student feel unseen and take their lives. It is a serious, serious issue when kids are bullied, or scared, or don't feel accepted, and don't feel like they are welcome here. So please, let's create a more inclusive and welcoming environment for every student. Thank you.
Thank you. Todd Schruax?
Oh, there goes three seconds. My name's Todd Schruax. I live in Belvedere Springs. I know many of you, and I appreciate your sitting here and listening to us talk. These are some impassioned speeches from some impassioned advocates. I hope you consider their words. I had a minute last time, so I feel like I can take a breath. Mary, I'm glad to see that you have a safe space there, and I think all the schools should be a safe space for the LGBTQ community. I applaud your efforts in bringing it to the agenda and your staunch support for the community. And for the student that you had from the past that came to advocate for, for the community and applaud your efforts. I thank you for that. I think all the colors of the rainbow were important to us, and that we should recognize that and allow for those pride things and recognition of the pride history. Previously, there was a nurse that came here and talked about how masks don't matter. I'm a licensed nursing home administrator. I carry a license, and I have to have continuing education in healthcare. And I'm responsible for the lives and safety of my staff and the residents in these facilities. I was dismayed when I saw a nurse say masks don't matter. I thought at that very moment she should have her license stripped. Also, I saw a school counselor say, "There's no time for the LGBTQ community or to counsel them." I thought she, I'm also a social worker, should have her license stripped. I don't think we should neglect the community that we all here deserve as part of our community. I was disheartened by the throng of people that advocated against masks and advocated against the LGBTQ rights. I hope you were too. Whether it's an election issue or not, the time now is to act, not November. Don't do what's expedient. Do what is necessary. Do it now. Don't do it when it's convenient or after you've got enough votes. We would like to do the act now, and I expect as much. We pay you some, not a much. Oh, back to the budget issue. I don't believe in SROs. I don't believe more guns make people more safe. I believe paying $130,000 for a sheriff or a police chief from Cape Coral is money well spent. I think that money could pay for two college professors. That would be money better spent.
Thank you. Daniella Dai?
My name is Daniella Dai, and I'd like to say that I heard everybody speak yesterday about how you got messages and responses in regards to the way that people felt safe or the heckling and things that happened, and that was both directions. So I would just like to be on the record and ask on a forum where everybody can hear, and it could be record, that if it's going to be applied, it's going to be applied both ways. That when we're going to put a policy into place that we have in place already, we should enforce it. And if we're going to put a policy in place or make a change, it should be changed across for everybody. There shouldn't be any kind of special provisions for, for me because you think that I'm a heckler or somebody else to protect them because you're worried they're going to get heckled. We got heckled just as much as anybody else did. I wanted to address something that Mr. Dupree O'Brien, or, sorry, Mr. Dupree Bruno keeps saying, and it refers to people that will not wear a mask, as if we're just sitting here being willfully neglectful, and that's not the case. Many of us actually do have medical conditions, which have been documented by people that are here at the board who have asked for our medical documentation and have reviewed it and have on record said, "Oh yes, we're right. You do have that information." So when you're making your recommendations and you're making your statements about what we will or will not do, you should take into consideration that we will listen to our medical professionals, the people that know our medical history, over the people that make policies for the school board, because it doesn't apply to medical professionals. Many of the people here I've spoken to on a personal level or on a political level, unfortunately, and it seems that we're under the impression that there is a non-discrimination of rights policy that was passed. We want to enforce that. We want to enforce non-discrimination across the board. We don't think that anybody should be discriminated against and have regularly said that that needs to be enforced across the board. Recently, this week, there were stickers placed on the school doors that encouraged safe space for pride members. That same safe space is not put across the board for everybody else. There's no safe space, period. Heckling. So I will just say that if we're going to make safe spaces, I think that we should continue to go ahead and encourage safe spaces, period. You have a safe space to speak, whether it has to do with any of the things that are protected. We should be teaching kids not to bully, not to harass, not to heckle, not to be rude, not to physically harm or anything else. I guess that's it for now. Thank you.
Pamela Vasquez?
Hello, uh, my name's Pamela, and I'm here to voice my support on adding a LGBTQIA history month. I'd like to point out, especially after we just heard that, that the issues that people in the LGBT community face are very unique and different than the issues that people who are not in that community face. By having safe spaces just generally, people will fall through the cracks, and certain issues that are unique to the LGBT community will not get addressed. We can't always focus on the majority. Sometimes, especially in a world where there is not equality, we do not have equality for LGBT people. In a world like that, we need to be focused on the specific issues that the minority face here. I really would like to point out, and I'm sure that you've maybe seen the statistics, but people in the LGBT community are five times more likely. That number goes way, way more up when we can, when we add in the T. And when we have, when we start thinking about school as this, as this place we want students to feel safe in, we want schools to be a place where students can forget the stuff that happens at home. They can forget any of the hardships they might feel when they're not at school, and they can go to school and they can feel like, "This is safety for me. This is a safe, this is a safe haven." And when we do not create environments like that, when we do not take steps towards making sure that students feel like it's not a constant concern of whether or not someone's going to find out that they're, they're gay or trans, that when... to find out that they're gay or trans, that when, it's not a constant concern of whether or not they can use the bathroom, them holding it in because they feel like they can't even go to the bathroom, then that's not creating a safe community. That's not creating a safe space. When students have to worry about whether or not, you know, who they're talking to knows about their history, knows about the history it took for them to get the rights that they have now, that's not creating a safe space. We need to have a school in which we understand, as a collective, the history that has gone behind people getting their rights here. So that people fully understand what being trans is, what being LGBT is. So people aren't scared, and that's what we have to do. And for me, I have family members who are in school engaged, who are in the school system here, and are trans, and they need to have this kind of support. Please.
Thank you. Louis Navarro.
Louis Navarro, retired teacher, many years in Lee County. My son said, "Dad, don't go down there anymore, they don't listen to you." He said, "Why risk COVID?" He lives in Jacksonville. I said, "Well, perseverance." I was very shocked to see, and I talked to Mr. Malloy, your dashboard here, it's gotten worse. You quit keeping track, and you turned it over to the state. I believe in the state as much as I do in the federal government. That means zero. Now, I'm shocked. I talked to Mr. Malloy. You quit in October, this thing, you gotta have cataract surgery like I had to even read it, and it's baloney. I don't believe the state. So, I asked you for a dashboard, and you wouldn't even do that, and now you come up with this thing. And I heard there's 120 cases of kids that are supposed to stay home at Fort Myers High from one of the candidates. You know, let's be truthful, come on. Second round's coming. Europe's locking down again, and you guys are just sitting here, I don't know, just wasting away, I guess. Put everything back in the dashboard. I talked to one board member, she said, "Oh, there's no deaths, no one's seriously injured, we're doing the best I can." Well, I'm sorry, that's not good enough. It really isn't. You don't even take the temperature of the kids coming in. If they're $69.99, you could have the SRO, they don't do a lot, they should be teaching classes, the cops, and be doing other things. Take their temperature with the principal and the assistant. What is it about? $100,000 and you don't have it? But you guys gave yourself fat raises? I saw a video where the board chair is approving another percent and a half to the administrators, and it's coming out of the sales tax. Maybe it's wrong, but that's what I saw. Next thing I want to talk about is the masks, staffing connections. I know, the chief's here tonight, he said, "We don't pay for it, you don't pay for it, the city pays for it." Well, they need to wear masks. Here's, I'm leaving you these pictures. I've talked to Mr. Lloyd, I've talked to a lot of people, and nobody's doing anything, and I don't see the kids wearing their masks like they should be, when they get off the bus and on the bus. But I'm not doing a witch hunt on the bus drivers, I'm just telling you. But I've given you the addresses, I don't think I need to do that anymore. Those are the crossing guards. But I will make the first donation, $69.99, I'm gonna put up a check, and I want all of you people that are making hundreds of thousands.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Melissa Hatter.
Thank you, Mr. Navarro. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Melissa Hatter. I'm a mother of two kids, in our school district, and one of my kids is being, she, somebody tried to attack her at a school event eleven days ago, and I still have no answers from the school as to plan of action to protect her in the future. I don't know if the non-student that was there and did it is banned. I can't get any answers. I've reached out to the board. In my paper, I put down retaliation here for, but what I'm really here for too is accountability. That's what you've been elected for, and you're not ensuring. And we have a bullying and harassment policy, and it's not being followed, and nobody cares. It's been eleven days, nothing. It took the other parent, because she didn't report a misappropriation of boosters like I did, which was supported in the preliminary investigation by the auditor, so, but I'm the villain, and I can't get any responses to anything I ask about my children. I can't get it from the superintendent, I can't get it from the board members. I got two responses after the 30th email. I mean, I don't know what we're supposed to do. Everybody can do whatever they want, and we'll just ignore her. I'm not going away, I have two kids in the district. Both of the responses that I received stated, "Yeah, they're doing the investigation. You're doing an investigation about the boosters, you're not doing about the retaliatory behavior I'm victim of, my daughter is." Nobody's willing to step up. I was actually, I asked one question of the auditor, and that was, "When did it start?" Because I keep the booster investigation, because I keep getting conflicting information. I asked that one question, it was not answered. You know what happened? Instead, I got a call from Mr. Blazina, that Mr. Williams asked him to call me, and asked me not to call the auditor, or contact him again. I wasn't asking details, I asked a start date. But I'm not allowed to call? What about my other complaints? What about the retaliation? Getting, and that my daughter is. Oh, but don't call us. Oh, Melissa sent emails about it. Let's not answer her, let's not respond. It's demeaning, it's unprofessional, and it's illegal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Courtney McGirt. Danielle Hagman.
Can you guys hear me?
Everybody hear me?
Yes. Okay, so I was here at the last meeting as well, when we were talking about the LGBTQ History Month. Tonight, I've decided to take a different route than has been previously taken about it, because I'm sure after hearing the same points and statistics and anecdotes, there's nothing you really haven't been told on repeat. Instead, I'm gonna talk about the last time we were gathered here, for pretty much the same reason we are tonight. But the last time I was here, I was here with my oldest two daughters. Tonight, my wife is here with me, and our eight-month-old daughter. This is our daughter who we co-parent with a gay couple who works within the school district as well. We are a blended family, and she is the glue that holds us all together. When my daughters and I left here two weeks ago, our ride home was really contemplative and a little sad. As one of the last to speak, we had the opportunity to sit in the back of the room for an hour, and listen as one fellow human after the other, came up and listed their reasons why LGBTQ history and education were not worthwhile subjects to incorporate, and some even going so far as to call the concept perverse. When we left here, the only questions they had equated to, "Why do people hate our family? And why is our history not worth learning about?" They were sad because to them, the concept of loving everyone also equates to wanting to know everything they can about those people who are different from themselves. These two concepts go hand in hand. I had no answers for them because there's really not a valid one. Visuality means everything to those who are invisible. Hate can only flourish through ignorance, and ignorance is only perpetrated through the absence of education. This is why we have Black History Month, Holocaust Week, Women's History Month built into our curriculum. And while we have made a lot of progress, and it continues to be made in spite of those who would prefer to halt it, our children still come home from school with stories, like today, about classmates who say things like, "I'm not a homophobe, I just don't like gay people." Your goal is to create a world-class school system, it says as much in your mission statement. World-class status is not birthed from fear, it is birthed from inclusion. I hope you will take the time to consider what I've said, and consider the example you're setting, by allowing fear of pushback or votes to dictate this end result. After all, in the LGBTQ community, the battle for inclusion is a battle we fight every day. And if we just tabled our struggles for fear of reprisal, I wouldn't be sitting here discussing any of this with you tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Randy Scott.
Wow. Hello, all you beautiful people. Your masks look really good. This really doesn't look like a Trump rally to me. And I think that is what masks are about. You can forget all this health stuff, because we're intelligent people. I'd like you all to try a little bit of liberty. I'd like you to do some studying in regards to what masks do to your health. Let's forget about just the physical health. Let's look at your mental health. Let's look at whether or not you like liberty, all right? Since when are we responsible to take care of our neighbor who might be vulnerable? All right? We can walk around, we can avoid them, but if you're vulnerable, you stay home, you take off the mask. And let's get back to the point of health. If it was really a problem, and you make us stand back here, then I think during the briefing meeting, when I was here earlier, your 20 chiefs, who have that special privilege to walk up there, and to walk up there, and to speak to you, spreading their liberty disease upon you, is hypocrisy at its finest. Look at the kids at school, the students, do they have this freedom of space? I bet you they don't. I bet you they're close. But we're privileged, right? This is a political thing you're doing. This isn't health. You're fochy hackaloids. And that's a shame, because it's all of you except for one board member, in my opinion, that are moving this school district in a real far leftist agenda. And that's horrible. It's clear, it's evident. You know, I currently have a lawsuit against a school district, sitting in the Second District Court of Appeals. It's in regards to an alleged bribery that was performed by one of your vendors, and that vendor gave it to an employee. I asked for those records, and those records aren't available to me, so I sued. The judge at the lower-level court just dismissed it, suspante, which means without any presentation of a defense from the district. Completely improper. Now your counsel, who has to be hired outside, because your board counsel doesn't have the capability of managing these sort of suits from a pro se plaintiff. I think this district has finally found what the plague is all about. I think across America, that students and parents who love liberty are being set free by powers and sources greater than me, and greater than you. Thank you.
Mercedes Harry.
Good evening. My name is Mercedes Harry, and I want to first apologize to all of you, because I had no idea that we, as a society, have heaped so much responsibility on the school board to do absolutely everything for our children, from transporting them, to feeding them, to making them feel safe, to every, I mean, it just, it blows my mind. So I actually feel bad for you guys, and I appreciate, even though I don't agree with many of you, what you are doing, because I couldn't do it. I do want to say that I'm not against anybody. I don't hate anybody, and I teach my kids not to hate anybody. Hate is an evil thing. Many people that I know don't hate anybody. What we love is our children. And so I think people are like me, and we're just a little confused about what exactly you guys are planning to do with the LGBT Month. Last week, it was bullying, even though we have lots of bullying legislation, both on a state and local level. This week, it's about safe spaces, but I thought it was about history. So I'm confused. And when people like me are confused, and we see what's happening, and we see what seems to be an agenda that has many other extreme factions attached to it, they're all kind of together, all the time, all the time, all the time, it's a little concerning. So I think I'm just unaware of what the age minimum is, what the curriculum will be. I'm not opposed to anything, maybe not a conversation for my six-year-old, but maybe my 16-year-old, "Let's talk about that." So I think that it's a good idea for all of us to take a step back, and as opposed to being so defensive, and trying to emote our way all the time, maybe it's just a good idea for us to be clear about what our objectives are. And I apologize if I missed it, I've been watching board meetings, I may be a little behind, but I feel like, for me as a parent with two young children in the system, if I just had a better idea, I'd be open to it. I'm a Gen Xer. We never had a problem with anybody until about 2010. And then suddenly, the country that I grew up in, as a brown woman, which I guess gives me some kind of clout now, I'm not sure, I just thought I was an American, I just thought I was Mercedes. But that's not the case now. So with that being said, let's work together, let's find a resolution, but let's also be careful about what we do with our really small children. You don't have to teach anyone to hate anybody. Just wait until maybe things are age-appropriate. That's my two cents. Thank you.
Madam Chair, those are all of the public comments.
Thank you very much. I want to thank everyone who came to share their opinions and their thoughts. I do want to reiterate that we are, as a school district, committed to anti-bullying and harassment, and any discrimination based on race, color, sex, orientation, gender identification or expression, disability, age, religion, socioeconomic status, or any legally protected category. We hear you, we understand that there are differences of opinions. We did have a workshop yesterday where we agreed as a board unanimously that we would wait for our workshop on the LGBT issue until after the elections and the reorganization of the board, so that any decisions made will be made by the board that will be seated together for the next two years. We are listening. Mr. Navarro, you know that I'm listening, and I hope that you'll re-watch that video, because I don't know if it's, what you saw was correct. And Mercedes, I'm glad that you were the last speaker, because I loved what you said, "Let's work together." And that is what we have to do, because we all have the responsibility for this community's children, and we take it very seriously. And again, we look to be equitable, and provide equality, and a safe space for all of our kids. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is approval of consent action items. The documentation for items listed under consent is made available to board members seven business days prior to the board meeting. We are expected to review the material, and we have an opportunity to speak to the superintendent with any questions we may have regarding the recommendations. Some of these items have also been briefed or workshopped with the board in advance of appearing on the action agenda. Board members, are there any agenda items you wish to pull for discussion under the Board members, are there any agenda items you wish to pull for discussion under the unfinished business, tabled items portion of the agenda? Mrs. Giovannelli?
I have none.
Ms. Patrica?
No, thank you.
Ms. Jordan?
I have none.
Ms. Gittens?
No.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes, I do. I wish to pull G1 Personnel Recommendations, specifically, since there's three categories, probably can't divide it, but I'm going to say it's under Administrative Agenda, G1.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan?
I have none.
And I have none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda's consent action items with the exception of Item G1? Ms. Gittens?
I move to accept the agenda with the exception of Item G1, Administrative.
Thank you. And a second, please.
A second.
Second, Mrs. Giovannelli. Board members, please record your vote.
I voted... I voted aye. It gives me my little red change vote hand, so it appears as if it...
I'm sorry, Ms. Thomas. Unanimous. Okay. We have one pool to address. Dr. Atkins, will you please read your recommendation for the pulled item?
Yes, Madam Chair, and approval of the general personnel recommendations as presented.
Thank you. Is there a motion for the pulled item? Board members? Ms. Vaughn?
So moved, recommendation for, discuss the pulled item.
Second.
Thank you. And seconded by Ms. Gittens.
So, board members...
Is it to discuss or to approve?
So, because you can't, the discussion will come with the motion. So are you making a motion to adopt the superintendent's recommendation?
No.
No? I know you want to discuss it.
I want to discuss it, to not adopt this...
Okay. So I believe what Madam Chair is looking for at this point, is there a motion to adopt the recommendation, so that discussion can be open?
I move that we adopt the recommendation of the superintendent with regard to Item G1, Approval of Personnel Recommendations, General.
Okay. It has been moved by Ms. Patrica. And a second, please. Ms. Morgan? Now, is there any discussion, board members? Ms. Vaughn?
Okay, since I was the one that pulled this. We discussed this particular recommendation at length yesterday, and I listened very carefully to the rationale prior to yesterday's meeting. I also had pulled both of the job descriptions. One of the job descriptions that I pulled as a comparison is executive, as Director, Safety and Security, and the new position is Executive Director, which is, there's Superintendent Chief for people out there, and then Executive Director, so it's a very high-level position, Safety, Security, and this adds Emergency Management. When I asked about the cost on this, I was told that it is a repurposed executive position. It's a position that's been on the books for a while. We actually just a few months ago approved this new job title that added Emergency Management to Safety and Security, and that it was a cost-neutral change. Okay, and I understand what that means, since it's pre-budgeted. However, the reason that I am pulling this item, and that I am not supporting this item, is that I do not feel that as a school district, we're in the position, whether this is budgeted or not, to add yet another executive position here in the district. And I'm going to repeat the points that I made yesterday. Number one, I, again, I listened to the rationale. To me, a lot of the duties of this position seemed to be PR kind of duties. The second thing is that we're in a real bind with our teachers. And as we have more and more students that are going to be returning face-to-face in the classroom, we have openings, we have teachers that I have personally talked with, who are quite literally at the end of their rope, and suffer weekly, daily, from migraine headaches, blood pressure problems, spend their weekends working on trying to get caught I worry about our teachers, and I also worry about the fact that we are right now in negotiations, and I can't talk about negotiations, but I can say this, that I want to keep as much money on the table that we can offer if we need to, until the negotiations are done. If we can, and I don't see what a problem, I don't have a problem, I said this yesterday, with revisiting this after the new year into the new semester, when we see how we're doing with our teachers, because after all, they are the backbone of our district. Yes, you can run, maybe not a district this size, but you can run a school without administrative personnel, but if you don't have teachers, there is no school. So, an abundance of caution, and looking at our taxpayer money, and looking at not wanting to go further into debt, thinking about the salary of an executive director, and how many teachers this might fund, several, also the fact that this could fund quite a few teacher raises if it gets to that point, I find those things much more important. And I'm going to add that the start date for this is not until December 1st. So if this were such a pressing need, and we've had this pandemic going on since last March, we could have actually gotten on this a lot earlier, as we were making our initial changes in the school district, as we were making not just policy changes, but coming up with plans on how to keep our children safe in the schools, coming up with plans on virtual options for our children, and all of those things. I mean, we're in the middle of the pandemic, and yes, it's caused a whole lot more work for everybody, for all the administrators, and all the teachers as well. So I don't have a problem with revisiting this, if it really is something that we can't do without at a later date, but I do not want to spend any more money on creating, and this is a created job, it's not one that we're filling, that somebody left. I do not want to spend one more nickel on created jobs for upper-level administrative management until we get everything on an even keel, we have our teachers taken care of, we have all of our supplementary employees, spout and tap, taken care of, and then let's look at it again. And if we feel we really do need this position then, and I want to say, this has nothing to do with the individual, it's solely having to do with what I feel is right for this school district, and my responsibility for financial oversight as a board member. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Ms. Morgan, and then Mrs. Gittens?
So, according to state statute, the school, the district school board shall designate positions to be filled. We approved the position 7-0. Describe qualifications, that was part of the approval process, and provide for the appointment. The district school board shall act upon written recommendations submitted by the district school superintendent for positions to be filled. So we provided for the position in the budget, we approved the position, we described the position, we provided for it in budget. The school district board, the district school board may only reject the position for good cause, period. And I would like the board attorney to please weigh in on this.
Can we please give our other...
Before she does?
Pardon me?
May we please give our other comments before we get the board attorneys?
I think Deprue Bruno will respond to Ms. Morgan at this point. Thank you.
With regards to what Ms. Morgan said in terms of, when the superintendent makes a recommendation for a hire, that's pretty well-settled law, and goes, there's many, many cases that address that, as well as the Attorney General opinion. When the superintendent makes a recommendation for a hire, the board must accept that recommendation unless good cause is shown. And the definition of good cause pursuant to case law is, one, moral turpitude, or, two, if there is a lack of professional qualification.
Thank you, Attorney Bruno. Excuse me, Ms. Gittens, but I'm going to ask Dr. Atkins, he had a comment.
Well, I had my hand up first before, anyway, that's fine. That's fine.
Ms. Gittens, please proceed.
I am not attacking any individual, I am discussing policy. Honoring my statutory right as an elected official, elected by the people for oversight of the school district of Lee County, according to Policy 5.021, Section 2, Line 22, revisions to job titles, pay grades, or other base compensation minimum qualifications, major functions of administrative scheduled positions, and changes in base compensation shall require board action. In my understanding, what happened on the September 8th meeting, it was, the title was changed. We were told yesterday in our meeting that the, that the department head, as stated, decided to repurpose the position. Also, according to, and when I asked about a line item showing where that was already budgeted before the 8th, and on the 8th, by the way, what we were voting on was the final budget for the 2020-21 year, not for titles and changes. The other, when I asked for, what was the line item, and I was told, in fact, I was told when I asked about the position and how much it would pay, and I was told, "Look it up, it's online." So I did. And prior to that, two years ago, we went through the same deja vu of asking for line items. And in Florida Statute 1001.42, under the powers and duties of district school board, individual school board members may request and receive financial information. And we are continually told it's there, it's under personnel. And to kind of help you understand why I'm confused, if you say in a budget that it's under personnel, and you have all these other items, and I say, what is the, what is the makeup of that line item? And I've been told on several occasions, they don't have that. Well, I'll give you an example. It's like you going to the grocery store, and you buy $100 worth of groceries, and you come home, and someone says, "How much did you pay for milk?" And you say, "I don't know, I just bought groceries." Well, let me see your receipt. The receipt is not just going to say groceries, 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 it's going to say how much milk was. All I'm asking for is to show each item under personnel. The questions that I have, what was the frame, the timeframe, between the approval of the position and repurposing the position? Second, where's the paperwork documenting the change? Example, if there was a personal action form, a job description change, a budget change, there's got to be some type of paperwork that shows, not just a statement saying, "We chose to repurpose." And how long was the initial approved position there before it was changed? Because we were told that it was under another title, and then it was changed, repurposed. The main issue is that I would not ever have approved a top-level position during a pandemic in a district that we've been told over and over and over again that we are too top-heavy. We have hired consultants that have come in and have said, they have all said the same thing, we're too top-heavy. And in the middle of a pandemic, when we have children that have been out of education, some of them for six months, and we need tutoring for them, we need reading coaches, we need all the things that they need to make sure that they are educated, we need those things before we need another person at this district. Students are returning to education and need much help, remediation, handholding. An execution, an executive position can fund at least two or three, two positions. And I know you're tired of hearing me say it, but in the East Zone, we are desperate to get teachers. We're the highest on the list of needing teachers, and workers, and people to teach our children. And I'll stop saying it when there's equity and we don't have to ask for that. District-wide, students need mental health services. We've got the LGBTQ students here that are saying they have issues. And we could do with more trained guidance counselors, we're always talking about mental health. And I do not understand why our district defines priority, how they define priority. Please, 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 take care of the greatest needs first. Take a different look at priority. What will it take to redefine the definition of priority in the Lee County schools? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gittens. Mrs. Giovannelli?
We were elected as oversight of the district, so I had asked, I asked what the salary was going to be. I was told it was $100,000. I asked again in an email, and that, and I didn't get that answer today. I've heard through the, through gossip, that the position really is $170,000. So I have a hard time, in the middle of a pandemic, to, when we need the money in the classrooms, to pay another position to handle, to, actually to supervise, seven individuals, I was told yesterday, seven individuals. So I just have a hard time when I, I think the need is in the classroom, and the support for the teachers. If it's additional salary for the teachers and staff, whatever it takes, if that, that amount of money can be in the classroom, that I believe that's where it's needed at this time. I was not advised that we had a need for safety and emergency until it was put... I was not advised that we had a need for safety in emergency until it was put on the agenda last Tuesday. So, I'm just not quite convinced that we need this position at this time. I think that we've got so many other government agencies that has hiring freezes in the middle of a pandemic. So, that causes me for alarm. I, we already have a $2 billion budget, so, and we're told that budget's going to go, that could go away. So, then we'll have these positions and that we can't afford to pay our teachers and our staff. And I don't want it, I don't want to have another year bargaining where we can't pay our teachers and staff. That's where the money needs to be, in the classroom right now, every cent of it. So, at this time, I, I can't support this because I was unaware that there was a need for this position. So, until I am convinced of that, I won't support this tonight. Thank you.
Dr. Atkins?
We have, we have certainly a case why this position is needed. This is something I have really hoped to get to much sooner than this. We are in the middle of a pandemic. No. We're also toward the end of hurricane seasons. Thankfully, nothing happened. And we, in this day and age, with Marjorie Stoneman Douglas on everybody's mind, explosive active shooters being dealt with, something that is of huge concern to us. This is time for...
This is time for this school district, I think, to, to grow into its size and understand that when you're responsible for 95,000 students, that we have to have a position that has, of a composite nature of this one, that can actually coordinate an emergency response in a major situation across this district. We need somebody who has experience at doing this type of thing, that has the skill and the expertise to do this type of thing, and, and that is what this position is for. I mean, I, I think that you see a lot of other districts, you know, that are our size or larger, that have had this. Some of them even have their own police forces. I don't think that's necessary at this time. But here's the thing. We approved this job description. It is part of the approved budget. It, it was described as to why there was a need for this position, not just when the job description was approved, before that. We are in an environment, we're dealing with a pandemic, shooters, hurricanes, you have other situations like bomb threats and so forth, you have all kinds of other student situations. We had a situation in the neighborhood today that we had to have, had to have our folks be a part of in terms of diverting traffic to a building. I mean, this is a small, small investment. This thought that this is somehow going to come to the saving grace of the, of the negotiations is just, that's just simply not the case. You're talking about an amount of money that with the number of employees that we have across this school district, I'm sorry, it's not going to make a dent. This is not going to be make or break negotiation time. In fact, this is about the student, the student's safety and about the safety of the employees. Let's think about that for a minute. This is also important as well. You know, so, yes, I feel passionately about this, as passionate as you feel on the other side. In my experience, this is something that's necessary, or I wouldn't be bringing it forward today. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Okay, board, Ms. Giovanni?
So, I have to ask you, Dr. Atkins, we have a director of safety. Are you saying that he's not doing his job?
I'm saying that we need more than just a director of safety.
Because, well, how does it, I mean, Marjorie Stoneman Douglas was over two years ago. So, I'm just trying to figure out now, I mean, why two, two years later? I don't, and, so that, I just, I wish you'd have brought me along at the seat of the table when you wanted to make this position happen, because I don't understand the need, because I was never explained the need. So, that's, that's why I can't support it, I guess.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes. First of all, one of the questions that was asked, I believe, yesterday at the workshop had to do with the approval of the job description. And the question was asked and answered, and it was made very clear that approving a job description does not, at that moment, at that meeting, mean approving that job. It's just a job description. And I believe it was Dr. Pruitt that said that we have a, I don't remember the word, but we have like a list, we have a, a log of various descriptions, some of which we are not using, but it's there for when we use it. And I, I would agree with Ms. Giovanni that this whole repurposed job came up awfully quickly, and I don't remember that we had a briefing on it. Secondly, as far as being the saving grace, I never said it was going to be the saving grace, but I did say that it would contribute to helping with having that extra money. As I recall, in prior, in a couple of years ago, when negotiations were at a, at a standstill, as I remember, and we needed more money, across the board, across the whole district, departments were asked to tighten their belt. And I don't think it sends a good message to the other departments that we have here in the school district. If we are approving, and as I said earlier, if all works out, fine, let's revisit it after the new year. But I, I just see so many reasons why this particular position should not be approved tonight. And I realize that some people are, look at the letter of the law and see it as more important than the, the concepts and the spirit of, of the law. But, again, Ms. Morgan talked about rejection of someone for moral turpitude, or someone was criminal. I didn't hear any of us who talked against this speak ill of the person that was selected. As a matter of fact, I didn't see a problem. But, as a board member, as someone who was elected to look at the finances, to make my best financial judgments, quite frankly, I don't care what it says in that policy. I'm not voting for this position at this time. If you want to put it off and try it again in a couple of months, fine. When we see what kind of position we're in. But right now, it does not send a good message if we start wondering where the money's going to come to support our employees and we ask everybody to tighten their belt. So, that's my final comments on, on this.
Thank you. Board members, any other comments? Attorney Bruno, do you have anything further to add?
There appears to be two discussions that I've heard. One of them is about the position and one of them is about the recommendation for the nomination. And that's two different issues pursuant to the statute. So, the recommendation for the nomination is very clear. The position is something that the board needs to decide.
Thank you. Okay.
But, may I ask, hasn't the board already decided?
Yes.
In funding the budget and...
If the board has already voted on the job description...
I'm sorry, in approving the budget and approving the job description?
If the board has already approved the job description and the board has already approved the funding of the position, then the board has already decided.
So, then the other question...
But I was clarifying that there's two different issues that you guys, what I'm hearing that you're talking about.
So, that decision's already been made. The board has already decided to create and fund the position. And now, we're just, what's in front of us is the superintendent's recommendation and the statutory framework surrounding that, which you've already explained. Thank you.
Thank you. That clarifies things, I think. Ms. Gittens?
Okay. And, and I don't know if I just was asleep during that time, but my understanding, what we approved was the 2021 budget. And at that time, it had been decided and the job description had been repurposed. That job description did not come back before the board with an explanation that we need this right now and here's why. We have not had that conversation. So, to say the board's already approved it, the board approved the budget, and at the time the budget was approved, it was listed in there, different from the position that we had spoken to, spoken about before, before it was repurposed.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion? Okay, then, at this time, we will take a, a voice vote, okay? So, Mrs. Giovanni? Can you state the motion, please, that we're voting?
Let's repeat the, Dr. Atkins, will you repeat your...
Approval of the general personnel recommendations as presented.
Okay. Thank you. So, we're voting now on approving Dr. Atkins' recommendation for the position, the administrative position. Mrs. Giovanni?
I vote no.
Okay. Ms. Patrica?
I will vote yes, because we had this conversation already.
Ms. Gittens?
No.
Ms. Vaughn?
No.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next on the agenda are attorney's recommendations. Attorney Dupree Bruno?
After all that, do you mind if I at least introduce?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Newland.
Dr. Atkins, would you like to introduce?
Mr. Newland, I apologize for the late hour. This is David Newland, Executive Director of Safety, Security, and Emergency Management, and I am... I, for one, am thrilled and I am confident that he'll prove the three of you wrong. And I, and I do, I say that in the nicest of terms.
And I anticipate, based on his history with us in Cape Coral, that he will do an excellent job. Thank you. Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just give a reminder that it was never about the person.
Right. Thank you. And for the record, I would also like to say that...
To clarify that, it was never about the person. It was about...
And Ms. Vaughn, we have time for that in our end of the...
Okay. Well, I just wanted to make sure since...
Next on the agenda is the attorney's recommendations. And Attorney Dupree Bruno, please state your recommendations for this evening's agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like approval for the statement of work between the school board and RSM to provide internal audits and assist RSM in proposing to the school board with the purchasing and procurement compliance, as well as human resource and recruitment, as well as any additional meetings, requests, and research, as well as assistance with the ethics and education as approved by the board. This will be effective June 2020 for the period of one year, ending on June 19, 2021.
Thank you, Attorney Bruno. Board members, is there a motion to approve the recommendation to approve the statement of work between, the approved, the statement of work agreement between the school board of Lee County and RSM US LLP to provide internal audits and assistance? Ms. Morgan?
I move we approve the RSM statement of work.
Thank you. And now, a second. Ms. Giovanni, second. Okay. Any discussion, board members? Ms. Jordan? No, Ms. Patrica?
Attorney Dupree Bruno, I thought that we had asked them to include in here that phone calls would not be charged separately. I didn't see that anywhere in here. And also, I didn't see anywhere in here the structure of payment.
Yes.
I can't approve this without those edits made.
So, with regards to the phone calls, what the language is, and if I can, let me just pull it up really quickly here. Basically, what they have done is encompassed everything with regards to the two audits. It's included in that. And anything else that would require any additional work would have to come to the board for approval. So, that's how it's drafted. And with regards, your second question, Ms. Patrica, was with regards to the payment?
Okay. I don't understand how that explanation answers my question about phone calls.
So, any phone calls relating to the audit is included in the fixed price of the audit.
But it doesn't say that in here.
It, it, it doesn't specifically say phone call, but it includes, it, if I can pull it up, I'll find the language for you. Give me one second. It encompasses everything, is how it was written. And with regards to the second question, they will be paid after the completion of everything and the report is provided. They will receive one lump sum payment at that time.
Where in the agreement does it say that?
Hold on one second, if I can, give me one second to pull it up, ma'am.
It does appear that it's the same one that they had, the first one, without the corrections.
If you go to page 8, under D, it starts, looks like it's the second, the third paragraph, "The total cost for purchasing and procurement compliance and human resources recruitment and onboarding audits, including project-related expenses," which will include the phone calls, "will not exceed $50,000 each and will be billed on a fixed fee basis when the final report is submitted to the board."
Okay. Thank you. I'm still not comfortable without the phone calls being in there. As I indicated at our workshop on this, I was able to find some double billing from the Weiss-Sarota. They told us, and they wrote in there, that phone calls would not be charged. And when they charged us for phone calls, I was able to go back and push back on that. And I'm not, I'm not, I mean, I specifically said I needed the language phone calls in there, and I don't see that language in here. I've searched for the term "phone" and I've searched for the term "calls," and it's, I don't see it anywhere. And I, I don't have a comfort level knowing that I can't call my internal auditor without potentially being billed for it.
So, with regards to those specific projects, because I specifically talked to them and discussed this question with them, it is inclusive within those two audits. With regards to anything else, if you go to page 6, under Meetings, Requests, and Research, it specifically says, "From time to time, the school board or district staff may request RSM to perform ad hoc requests, research, attend meetings beyond the above projects due to the unknown factors and needs. Fees for such services will be on an hourly basis and will only be conducted upon approval from the board."
I understand. But if I want to call them and I want to discuss a question that I have about...
If it's a question about the two audits, that's included.
Or if I have a question about their performance, or if I have a conversation to have about why did they decide to recommend a fraud, waste, and abuse call for further investigation?
So, if you look further down in that same section, under the fraud, waste, and abuse, "RSM and client agree that any significant additional projects will be subject of mutual agreed, separate executed statements of work, or if more appropriate, a mutually agreed and separately executed change order."
I understand. And where in there does it say I can call them without paying extra?
Well, they, if you call them to ask a question, then it has to come to the board for the board to say, yes, they can move forward with that project.
Rand?
Yes, Ms. Jordan?
I know we had multiple... I know we had multiple conversations about that because of the concern about how they had the bills broke out. And that was one of the conversations. It was specifically about if we needed to call to ask a question, that they would not bill us for that. And they were going to make sure that they put that in there. It has nothing to do with if we thought of something that we needed to do and it would come back before the board. It was just in general, if we were, any of us decided to call them, that they would not be charging us for that communication. And they were supposed to put that on the, in the contract as well as how they were being paid. After each project was done, then they were going to be paid.
So I think the scope of their work are the two audits, as well as the ethics and education, as well as any additional research requests, et cetera. And the way that they drafted it is, anything with regards to those two audits is covered. Anything with regards to those two other issues has to come back before the board. That's how they drafted it. And those are the only four things in their statement of work.
Any further discussion, board members? Okay, then at this time, board members, please record your vote. Ms. Gittens?
Did you get mine?
Unanimous 6-2-1, Madam Chair. Yes, thank you. Okay, 6-2-1.
I'm sorry, what is 6-2-1?
Motion carries. Thank you. Attorney Dupree Bruno, please continue with your next recommendation for this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next recommendation is with regards to the approval of a settlement agreement between the Collegiate School of Fort Myers and the board. This would be in lieu of the school board's immediate termination of said charter to allow the collegiate to voluntarily terminate. And they would also withdraw the current review in front of the administrative law judge.
Thank you. You've heard the attorney's recommendation that the board approved the settlement agreement allowing the Collegiate School of Fort Myers to voluntarily terminate their charter with the Lee County School District in lieu of the school board's immediate termination of the charter. Is there a motion to approve? Ms. Vaughn?
I move that we approve the settlement agreement allowing Collegiate School of Fort Myers to voluntarily terminate their charter with Lee County School District.
Thank you. And a second, board members. Ms. Jordan, thank you. Any discussion?
Can I approve this pending changes to the form and the typos in here?
This document that is uploaded is a corrected document.
Okay, and I reviewed the second one that was uploaded, and it still has form issues and it still has typos. So if I approve this, can we hold off on having the chair sign it until all of that is addressed?
I don't have any problems with approving unless the, until the form is addressed. And if you could tell me, you can send me an email in terms of what those are, because this document is a clean document.
Thank you. I'm comfortable approving it as long as we can make those changes. I mean, they're not substantive. It's just form and typos.
Ms. Fisher, you have a hand.
Yes, Ms. Vaughn?
I'm just wondering why Ms. Patrica didn't bring up these issues?
I did.
Yes, you brought them up yesterday during our meeting?
I brought them up with the attorney, and most of them were fixed, but all of them were not.
Okay, but not during our meeting?
And I'm a board member. I can ask questions at the table.
I'm just-
Before things are approved.
Well, excuse me, I'm just asking.
Point of order, point of order. Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion regarding, Ms. Giovinelli?
So, yeah, so I just want, I'm in support of this tonight. However, I think it's really important to make sure that in the future that we're vetting these charter schools. And I know it wasn't done by our grant writer and now Department Now. This was done two years ago, but I think it's important to note that this particular charter school had, was denied in several other counties. And so I think it's critical that we are making sure that we're vetting, vetting, so that this doesn't happen again, that we're vetting these charter schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Giovinelli. Any further discussion, board members? At this time, please record your vote. Seven zero. It's unanimous, Madam Chair. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, Ms. Tom. Seven zero. Seven zero. A motion passes unanimously. Thank you, board members. Next on the agenda is board members' comments and/or reports. Mrs. Giovinelli?
Okay, I just, I'll be real quick. I just want to thank everybody that came out and spoke tonight. I think it's really important that their voices are heard, and I want them to know that we are hearing them. I believe that safety is for all, and I, and all means all. So I just really wanted to acknowledge that tonight. And I also would like Ms. Dupree Bruno to address or take Mrs. Hatter's complaint, whatever that she's talking about at this point in time. She, it seems to me that she's not being taken seriously. So if someone could contact her and deal with that, because I don't want to be accused of not addressing an issue. And that's really-
Thank you, Ms. Giovinelli. I just want to let you know that I'm going to address that in my comments.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Because I missed that. Sorry.
Okay, yeah. Okay, thank you. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Patrica?
I have no comments.
No comments. Ms. Jordan?
I would just like to say I really appreciate everybody coming out, again, in support of the LGBTQA and everyone else as well. But I do believe that we, we do have a role in making sure that our children are protected and that they can go to school and be, feel safe. So thank you all for coming out here and speaking for them. But we do hear you. And a few things that I've been able to attend this week via virtual Future Makers, which was really great. It was a conversation about structural racism and implicit bias. And just listening to the people that were on that call, it really makes you think. It was a two-hour course, if you will, but it was, I felt that it was very beneficial for me. I have attended many meetings with Choice Neighborhood Initiatives. That's working with the Southward Village Project that will be on Edison Avenue and Ford, and multiple community meetings throughout the district, as well as working at, with Franklin Park, the community schools, and finalizing the strategic planning on what that looks like.
And that is it? Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Mrs. Gittens?
Yes, first I'll piggyback on Ms. Jordan on the Future Makers event. The, it was very, very good. And the part that I wish that all the board members could have been privy to, and I have asked them if it's something that is recorded, that we can share it, was the part about the history and the history of racism in Lee County. And by the time that section was finished, I don't think there was a dry eye on the Zoom meeting. And to think that we are in 2020 and some of the same things they talked about are still, still happening is very sad. In response to some of the comments, thank you to everyone that, that spoke. And Crystal, I, I feel for you that we don't politicize this, but that we think of children first and not politicizing. The thing that really struck me was Ms. Harry Mercedes' comment, when she says, "I don't hate, I hate anybody and I love all children." The key to her, her speech were the two words, "clear objectives." And personally, I think that's why we are here at this juncture today, is because there were not clear objectives that were shared, that were stated. I, as a board member, was not aware of some of the things. I wasn't aware that many of our staff and administrators have had training. And if that had been made known to us or told us what they were doing, then with the phone calls and all that we received from different individuals, we could say, yes, this group of people was already trained and here's what they were trained in. And that's what I've been saying all along when I first started out talking about it, was the word "educate." And the fact the word "educate" can mean different things to different people, as shown in our last two meetings, how polarized we are over what the word "educate" means. And I think we, I have said continually, we have a problem with communication, how we communicate, when we communicate, and to whom we communicate. And Ms. Fisher, and please don't take offense to this, that a lot of the things that have gone on, you were privy to more than, at least to me. I can only speak for me. And even to have the, the sign up tonight, it would, might have been a nice thing to say to the rest of us, here are some copies of this, if you would like to do the same thing. I think when we talk about communicating and being unified, we need to do that. And it could have been something that was said that we could have all done in support of the situation, and not singling out that one person is more in support of our students than another one is. This, I don't know. I just, I think that we need to, to look back. And honestly, at our workshop yesterday, it was not a vote that we would wait until November. If you look back at the meeting in the very beginning, we were told in a statement by Ms. Fisher that this was not going to be discussed until December. And I brought up something and I was told, no, we're not talking about that until, until our reorg meeting. And I have said all along that last, before the last meeting, I said, we can't just drop it. We have to explain to people that it's not we're throwing a group of children aside and ignoring them, but we need to get everything together and decide what it is we're going to collectively say. So it was not, and, and the way it happened, just taking it off of the agenda, did make it seem like, oh, well, we don't care. And when actuality, the whole point was that we needed to discuss it. And rather than wait until November, we should have done it right away. It was too big of an issue to, to push aside and wait until November. But anyway, that's, that's my thought on it. Is he still here, Mr.? Is it Newey? Congratulations and welcome to the district, and I look forward to working with you. And please understand that I had nothing, I don't even know you to have anything against you, contrary to certain comments, okay? I look forward to working with you like everyone else in the district, and thank you. This is Anti-Bullying Month. Tomorrow is the Unity Day. Whoa. Think about it. Tomorrow's Unity Day. And tomorrow, we're all supposed to wear orange. Well, I wore orange today because I knew we wouldn't be here tomorrow. But to remind everybody to wear orange, get an orange ribbon, wear an orange hat, whatever, to recognize every student that has been, may be, and is possibly being bullied. It's about anti-bullying. And as the Anti-Bullying Week states, it's about three words: kindness, acceptance, and inclusion. And I can't think of any living person that does not want all three, regardless of who you are and where you are. I have been told in the last couple of weeks that people are disappointed in me, because me, of all people, being the only black person up here, I should understand the plight of people. And yes, I do. Because I deal with it all the time, and it's not over. So I do understand kindness, acceptance, and inclusion for everyone. That's what the day is for tomorrow. Please wear orange to support our children. Thank you.
Mrs. Gittens. Ms. Vaughn?
Thank you. I am the board liaison to the Equity and Diversity Committee, EDAC, and we held a meeting a week ago yesterday, Monday, the 12th, and I wanted to give a report on that meeting. The first part of the meeting, the topic that we covered was instructional models, and the focus was on elementary. And we had 10 people on a panel, and there were a variety of people represented, represented from several of the schools, including principals and teachers from different grade levels. And because it's equity and diversity, the, the committee really wanted to know, well, what are the things that are working best, and what are the things that aren't working as well, with the emphasis on our, our students, particularly students of color, students who may come from homes that can't afford, that had to have hotspots that we provide. And anyway, it was a very, it was a very good, almost an hour that we spent with that. And the, the group presented a lot of positives. There weren't very many negatives, but of course, things are always better when, for teaching, at least from my point of view, when you're face-to-face. And the other thing is, there, there are some challenges with, with some of our students just because of economic situations, or, you know, if there are a lot of children in a particular home, sometimes those children don't have quiet places for, you know, that they could get away and interact with their classroom. The second part of the meeting, and it was quite a long meeting, dealt with the topic that we've already touched on tonight and several of my board colleagues have, have mentioned. We had, which is kind of unusual for a, for, for an advisory committee, we actually had six public comments. Some were emailed in, and we had a couple that were people who actually were there in the Zoom. I almost said in person. No, we were all on Zoom, but some had sent in their, their comments. And what I want to do is, and I'm going to preface this with, at the end of the meeting, because you know that an advisory committee is a school board advisory committee, and we will take back from the committee, take to the school board their, their desires, their recommendations, et cetera. And so- And so what it wound up to be, and this was unanimous, that the entire committee gave me a vote of confidence that I would do a good job of summarizing and educating the board on exactly what they had to say. Believe me, I tried to get them to give me something to say, but no, they, this is what they wanted. So this is what I'm going to do next. First of all, the comments from the public speakers, from the public comment, were very, very similar to the comments that I heard from the members of the committee. One big theme through that meeting was disappointment. Disappointment in the board, disappointment that the resolution to recognize LGBTQ Month did not happen. And many of them felt that it was particularly hypocritical in that we all were supporting the anti-bullying. And, and yet, if you look at the LGBTQ community, and a couple of the speakers tonight really drove that point home, they are bullied. They are, I remember, and I think all of us as board members, got a, an email from an older man, a man in his 60s, who was a gay man who had recently lost his spouse. And before we took this resolution away, he was so happy that we were going to do this, that this was on our agenda. Because he said, and you've got to figure his age and going back in time. And also, for those of you who are a little, even just a little bit younger, you, you may not remember a time when this wasn't out in the open. But in fact, I believe, I don't remember the year, but it was during President Obama's term that the Supreme Court recognized some of the rights that, that now seem like, you know, pretty, pretty normal. But this man said, "Oh, I so wish that when I was in school and, and really threw out my life, that I would have had these rights." Also, this is something else that was both from the committee and from the public comment. They felt that this resolution would have given students of the LGBTQ community more of an ability to see value in themselves, to see their self-worth, and to feel included, not like they were different. Comments specifically from members, and again, remember, it was unanimous among the members that these were their thoughts, and they endorsed all of these thoughts that were discussed during this meeting. They said that not endorsing this resolution sent a negative message to our children. And they felt, and I felt the same way, that, you know, when that decision was made, but of course, it's a board decision, not my individual decision, that it was particularly hurtful in that this resolution was pulled less than 24 hours before our meeting. So there's their, their hope and desire, and it was, and it was dashed. Again, this is what EDAC wanted me to tell all of you. We had a brief discussion on Equality Florida. Another group that I hadn't heard of, and it might be familiar to some of you, is a group called Glisten, is one that they mentioned. That's a good training group. And I remember specifically, as we were talking about the resolution, that it was brought up to this board that Equality Florida was political, and that, and, and I agree with the point that if a group is outwardly political, that it doesn't have anything to do, you know, we shouldn't have political agendas in our, in our schools. But that really wasn't, that's not true. I, I think just that statement, you know, sometimes if somebody makes a statement and said, "I did research on this," and they're very political, you know, sometimes you hear a statement and you think, "Oh, maybe it is true. Maybe they are political." But, and this goes back to something Ms. Gittens said. You know, I never realized that we actually have been using Equality Florida in the schools. I had no way of knowing. As a matter of fact, that very night, there were a couple of staff members that, and that's where I, we got posters this week, board members did. At least I found one on my desk from Equality Florida. And posters were on their way out to the schools in support of LGBTQ. History Month. If I'd known that, well, I really would have pushed for, I mean, if we're sending posters out to the school, and then the board pulls it, and that's, this is my own commentary, not from EDAC. I, I find that, well, I find it not, not right. I won't say what I'm thinking. Anyway, so we did have a discussion on that, and there's some wonderful, like the safe place, that's a decal, isn't it? And, and they have developed also, it's really neat, a, I think it's clings, gel, gel clings, you know, that you can put on windows and all. It's a picture of our, our seal for the school district, like that one there. And around it, there are hearts. And the hearts go from pretty pale-skinned all the way through all the different manifestations. Well, not everyone, but you know, different skin shades, down to the last two are rainbow striped. And it's, it's really, really neat. And, and these things are already going out to the school. So personally, again, I'm, I'm coming away from what EDAC said. Personally, I'm embarrassed, or sad, or upset, you know, negative emotions here that when we were discussing this, that I did not know what wonderful things we were doing from the Equity and Diversity Department that I didn't know about. Because it seems to me it would mesh just perfectly, we as a school board, with that. And I'm very sorry that a decision was made that we weren't going to, since it's still October, bring it back up. But I didn't. I thought about it, even mentioned it to Ms. Dupree Bruno. And then, as I talked to her about it, I kind of was reflecting what I said. And I said, "No, I'm not going to bring up that motion because it does go against what the board as a whole said." Finally, I want to give, and I'm back to EDAC, what they said. They said that they recommend that this board receive sensitivity, training, and education on this topic. That is their board recommendation, very specifically. And again, I'm going to say what Ms. Gittens said. I don't think we were ever informed that all of the principals were trained. I just happened to, somebody sent me, somebody out of the district sent me, "Hey, look, here," it was a very nice PowerPoint. And it wasn't anything I got from the district. So I, I just feel like if we go back to transparency and communication, I think a lot of this would have been avoided if there had been, up and down the line, better communication. Okay, I could say other things, but I've talked long enough. So thank you for listening. And I hope that as a board, Chair Fisher, if you noted, their recommendation, at least, that they would like to see us. And it sounds like it would be cost-neutral since apparently there is already a training module that was done for the, for the principals. Okay, so you have that noted?
Yes. And I'll address that in my comments. Thank you.
Okay, I'm, I'm done. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Ms. Morgan?
I neglected this afternoon, in good of the order, to ask the question. How do we put on the agenda for the reorg meeting issues that we believe should be addressed in the reorg meeting?
I would send them in by email to Attorney Dupree Bruno, if you have issues, and to Ms. McClung.
Not issues, just things that...
Yeah, topics for discussion.
For discussion.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have any other comments?
Other comments, thank you.
Okay, so I'm usually brief, but I may not be that brief this evening. So first of all, during public comment, Ms. Hatter had some comments about responses to her emails. And I had made a note to myself to ask Dr. Atkins to respond to that. And I'm sorry I neglected to do that. So if you could just briefly address that, so she doesn't feel totally neglected in your comments, I would appreciate that. The next thing I wanted to report on was, I attended the Foundation Board Meeting the other, last Friday. And so our partners in the foundation have done such an amazing job in supporting us through this pandemic and continuing to provide programs to enhance the education of our students. And I want to thank Marshall Bauer and his amazing team, who I think, I don't know, I think he has a whip back there or something because they are always working very hard. But they had many questions for Superintendent Atkins. And I think it probably was at least a half hour, if not more, where people were curious about what was happening with our response to COVID and the academics. And, and he did a super job and really, I think, informed our partners to the point where they are even more anxious to be partners with us and to help us and support us. The other partnership that I've been enjoying, and I do report on this as often as I can, but is with Lee Health, the Healthy Lee Coalition, and Healthy Minds. We've been finding locations for people to set up the Healthy Minds displays in different areas of the county. And what's happening is, they're trying to help people who have stress and job-related issues due to the pandemic, and trying to improve people's mental health. One of our mental health people, Sherry Wenzel, is also a member of that, and she represents the district quite aptly. I want to say that many people have been reached, and people have brought their children there to speak, kids who are contemplating suicide, kids who are having a lot of difficulty navigating through the stress that their families may be experiencing during this very difficult time. I want to welcome Dave Newland to our team, and I look forward to working with you also, Dave. So I was watching the news the other day, and speaking of Lee Health, Galisono Children's Hospital and our ESE department have a partnership, and they have Project Search. So our ESE students who are needing community-based instruction so that they have the opportunity to be wage earners and to, to basically positively impact the economy when they do finish with school, are working there as interns and volunteers at the hospital, doing all kinds of different jobs, including transporting patients, and folding laundry, and keeping records, and really, really adding a lot to the hospital environment there. So I want to thank them for that also. So now, the LGBTQ Resolution. I was the one who put it on the agenda. It was on the agenda a week before the meeting of October 6th. Equality Florida has been providing training to our administrators, our social workers, our counselors, many people in this district for probably close to four years. They also, along with members of our own Equity and Diversity Department, presented at Florida School Boards Association during a time all board members were present. One of our employees actually interacted with us about the training that's done. They were invited to go to FSBA to present because of the wonderful work that they've been doing in this district. I don't know how anyone could be totally unaware of that, especially since our, since our Equity and Diversity Department has been working so hard. There was a time when we had a principal's training. Dr. Atkins did a welcome when Dee Palazzo, the Director of Equality Florida, was here. I was there, I said a few words, and other board members were in and out during the day. So when people say that they're not aware, I don't buy it. I just want you to know that I meant no trouble or harm in doing that. I have been invited to be on the School Board Advisory for Equality Florida. I accepted. I've been on this whole year. And I have reported a few times. And I have, and I do have the documentation about the activities that were being involved with our staff in order to help with the diversity issue. This is supposed to be a safe space for all, including gender, orientation, identities, abilities, cultures, and backgrounds. Is it? I am embarrassed at what happened last week. It has definitely been more of a negative reaction because we took it off the agenda. Four members of our board decided to take it off the agenda because they didn't know how to handle it, and because we had had some input from the public. People have different opinions. They have different opinions about disabilities, about race, about religion, and, and of course, about sexual orientation and identity. I think that we do need to put it together. Ms. Gittens, you said kindness, acceptance, and inclusion. That's for all. That is for all. And I don't know how, but it's incumbent on this board to protect the children in this county, to get it together, and, and really live that. And yeah, we do need sensitivity training. And it's available right here in our own school district. So I think that when we, and I wanted to say too about Equality Florida. Yeah, they have... have a political action committee, so do many other organizations, like the NAACP, like our unions, okay? Do we not communicate with them because of that? This is a very dramatic election year, and I think that maybe that has partly contributed to this, but our reaction was unacceptable, and I think that we need to be thoughtful in the future before we make that kind of a decision and make our district look like it's not a world-class school system, and like we aren't working for each and every student to meet his or her personal potential. So with that, I want to thank our hard-working staff, the people in the schools, for all of the extra hours and extra effort that they have been donating and volunteering to make our kids' education the best it can be. And I'm going to ask this board to get on board and to join those people in that hard work, and to not be discriminatory, or allow ourselves during anti-bullying month to be bullied into making a decision that was not good for all. Thank you. Attorney Bruno?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to thank the board. I know yesterday, when we got our agenda review, I saw our attorney recommendation on there, and I was so surprised. And I think the board members that did put that on the agenda review was very helpful, and I appreciate you treating those recommendations the same way you treat the superintendent recommendations. And we were able to discuss things and resolve the question that was posed. So that was very appreciated, that we had that on the agenda review yesterday. And the only other thing, I don't know if the board members know, at this point, with regards to general liabilities towards errors and omissions, those cases are now being handled in the school board attorney's office for the past month and a half, so I wanted to let the board know that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Bruno. Dr. Atkins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will keep my comments brief, really, just to the Hatter situation, so thank you for the opportunities for that. I think the first thing, the incident that she was referring to that occurred after a football game, that is the most recent, and just want to assure Ms. Hatter and the board that I know staff has made it clear that the individual that was involved in that was an out-of-town person, and, believe, young adult, and that person is not invited back to a future game, so she can be, rest assured, that that will not occur. The other thing I think that's important on that, based on that situation, that it's my understanding that additional security will be in the parking lot of that particular high school, which is typical, that we do put security in those parking lots, particularly after games. So that's something that will take place. And then, I was also informed today that there has been mediation that has occurred among the specific students that were directly involved with that situation. So the last mediation, as I understand it, occurred today. Relative to a lot of the other things, you know, I spent probably about four and a half hours on Friday, working through one of the documents that were sent in to us, because you have to connect a lot of the different emails met with staff. And I think that the first thing I would say to everybody, including Mrs. Hatter, is that let's please be patient. We have an audit that is being completed. It is my understanding that, and my hope, that that will be completed this week. Now, Ms. Bruno was, DePree Bruno was very clear with the Hatters when we met with them, Ms. Madam Chair, you were there. She indicated that these audits can take a substantial period of time. I think of the word that she used was months, although I don't want to speak for her. Fortunately, it's not going to take that long in this case. You know, our indication from our auditor is that should be completed very, very soon. You know, I do want everybody to understand that I do believe that we have worked very hard to stay in communication. The degree of communication is very difficult to keep up with. I mean, it's, you know, one email is followed by a series of emails, and so a lot of them saying very similar things. So again, trying to piece those together. But again, I would ask for patience on the part of the parent and the board, because I do think we'll have, you know, a lot of this resolved with the completion of that audit. And that's all for my comments, unless there's any questions.
Thank you very much. Ms. Gittens?
I have a question for the superintendent. Can you please update us on the secretary position, and then I have a suggestion about that?
Okay. My understanding is that they are in the process of re-advertising that position, and when we get applicants coming in from that second round, they'll go through the screening process in addition to that. And I don't know the outcome, but I know she was going to reach back out to staff to see if we had anybody internal that could fill the void.
I'd like to put forward a suggestion that, and I haven't discussed this with any of the parties I'm about to mention, but I think it would be a reasonable idea to have Ms. Tortosa take that position, and then to hire a secretary that is a paralegal that would be able to assist our board attorney, more specifically, with legal items. And we can ask her opinion on that, it's just something that I thought about, and I said, I wanted to bring it forward and see what anybody thought. I think it would help us with our, you know, legal issues and things that have to be done, to have someone in that position that is, you know, has the law background. So that's what I'm putting forward. And I don't know if Ms., Attorney DePree Bruno would like to say whether that would be something that would be acceptable to you, or helpful, or...
You actually read my mind just today. I actually had approached Dr. Pruitt about what that process was like. At this point, I think it would be very helpful to have a paralegal, someone who has a little bit of legal experience to assist, especially with the responsibilities that are more than what's just in the job description. And I can provide the board with a list of all of those things, but I think it would be very helpful to have a paralegal. And I think I mentioned that to maybe a couple of board members as well, about perhaps having a paralegal, that would be helpful. And Ms. Tortosa, at this point, I know is working on the board advisement, but she's also working on some contracts, so I don't know if we can share her a little bit, but something like that would be very helpful.
So Madam Chair, how would we go about, do we, you know, propose it, or what, to have Attorney DePree Bruno work with the superintendent and Dr. Pruitt to see the feasibility of that?
And I think that Attorney Bruno said she did reach out to Dr. Pruitt, so at this point, I would put it back in the superintendent's and staff's hands to do that. I mean, we have the suggestion out there, and I'm sure that they will act on that. Is that okay, Dr. Atkins? Thank you. Okay. Okay, any other? On Monday, November 2nd, there'll be a board workshop at 1:00 PM, not 2:00, guys, sorry about that, Ms. Patrica. And on Wednesday, November 4th, there will be a board briefing meeting at 1:00 PM, as well as an action meeting at 6:00 PM. Tuesday, November 3rd, of course, is Election Day, so we won't be meeting officially that day. And, you know, my good wishes to all of those candidates who have worked so hard in an effort to become public servants, either once again, or for the first time. And everyone home safe, and thank you. God bless, and good night. This meeting is adjourned.